I'll call this meeting to order, or to order again at 6:37 PM. I'll state for the record that we were in executive session for the purpose of discussing non-union contracts and negotiations. So, welcome, everybody. We begin by seeing if there's any public input about something that's not on the agenda tonight. I will pause for a minute. Make yourself known if you would like to speak. Seeing that nobody's here from the public, I will move on to student report. I do see Shivie here. And Shivie, congratulations first and foremost on being named 25 under 25. That is an incredible accomplishment, so congratulations to you. Yay, Shivie.
So, I can just start, and this is just like all the other years we've done student reports. I'm excited to be back talking a little bit about what students at North Running High School are currently doing. So, as you all know, we're all back in school with regular pool testing once a week, lunch safely distanced in the cafeteria, and much of our social interactions between peers and friends back to normal. Logistically, only a few things have really changed. We sign out electronically to leave the classroom for contact tracing purposes. We leave once in between each other at lunchtime, but we still primarily do all of our work online. In addition, there have been a couple of larger scale changes, maybe a little bit unrelated to COVID. The middle and high school get out at the same time, which I think everybody's aware of. And I think this did cause a little bit of resistance at the beginning of the year due to some initial traffic. I think a lot of high schoolers are recognizing the best times to kind of leave for school in the morning to avoid that traffic, and things are definitely settling down a little bit. I do have to say that the late start is really great on my end, and I think a lot of my peers' end. A lot of us tended to wake up at crazy early hours last year to cram for some last-minute studying or do some homework, and being able to wake up at a healthier, more normal time and still kind of retain that reviewing time is super significant for us. I think it's really coming through, especially with the extra load a lot of people are taking this year in terms of classwork. So, on to kind of clubs and organizations within school. I can start a little bit more with the long-term ones. The National Honors Society is having our induction ceremony next year, and we just elected our leaders for that group as well. The society kind of serves as a tutoring service for underclassmen, so underclassmen can kind of reach out and have seniors organize and help each other and help underclassmen with homework and such. Other clubs are also getting back into in-person meetings. We just had the club fair last week to help kind of drive engagement. The Social Activism Club, which I run alongside a couple other people, got a lot of sign-ups, so it's definitely a better kind of format for the fair than the virtual format we had last year. Moving on to kind of the maskers department. They are running their haunted playground fundraiser this year, which will raise money for their production through kind of a haunted theme park kind of event. And then kind of moving down to athletics and everything. Volleyball, they just did a super significant breast cancer walk and fundraiser for charity. And then kind of onto the record, the diversity teams are doing really well so far for overall scores, kind of aside from the Cal League scores. For overall scores, we have football, 3-0 right now. Golf is 6-2. Boy soccer is 3-1 with one tie, and girl soccer is 2-3, and girls volleyball is 1-4. So, those are all pretty good. And then I can also just end this presentation with a little bit of student work. I can talk a little bit about what I've been doing in my classes over like the last month that we've been in school. I'm currently taking AP Spanish, so that class is really fun, surprisingly not as daunting as it sounds. We do work to speak solely in Spanish when we walk into the classroom, which is a little bit scary, only reverting to English if we have a question, so super rarely. The class is really small, there's only four students total, but it is super stimulating to be taught in another language. We write and we present reports on current issues and events in Spanish-speaking countries worldwide, and we connect this information to current policy, current events, politics, and stuff like that going on in the United States. We've already had a couple informal debates and discussions on topics that are super interesting like corruption in politics, climate change, et cetera, and they're all in Spanish, so it's really an interesting change. It's definitely one of my most enriching classes this year, and it's super fun to kind of take part in. So, just kind of a rundown of what's going on since the last time you had a student representative. Hopefully, that kind of answered a lot of questions. Aside from the stress of college applications and stuff like that, I think seniors and all of the NRHS students are definitely doing pretty well, considering the long-lasting circumstances and effects of COVID and kind of everything else that's been going on.
Excellent. Thank you, thank you so much. Questions, comments? My only question, I guess, Shivie, would be with Spanish. Do we know what the update is on, because I know a lot of times there are trips that are potentially planned through some of the foreign language clubs. Has there been any update on whether or not that might be able to happen this year or not?
Yeah, so International Club is run by one of my friends, and they kind of, they kind of work with a couple of other clubs to plan a lot of events. I know Adventure Club is also run by another one of my friends, and she was telling me, I'm pretty sure, that they are trying to get the Japan trip underway this year, which is really exciting. So, that is not specifically run, I don't think, by the Foreign Language Department, Adventure Club, but I do know that a lot of upperclassmen are probably going to be able to maybe visit Japan later this year. I think that's the goal. I think last year and maybe the year before, those trips were canceled, so it's definitely something that we're looking forward to.
Excellent. That's really all I have, and just, you know, want to congratulate you again on, you know, your accomplishments. I know it's amazing that, you know, you've been here for a few years, and, you know, I wish you all the best for a wonderful senior year.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, Shivie.
Okay. And as always, you are welcome to stay on as long as you want, or if you want to hop off, that's fine, too.
I do have to leave, but thank you so much.
Okay, thank you.
Great job. Thank you as always.
So, moving on. So, Dr. Daley, do we have the new Diversity Equity and Inclusion Coordinator here?
I, I'm not sure if she's going to be coming in person tonight. We had invited her, but I'm not sure whether her schedule allowed, but we do have, in Mr. Colleen's introduction, he does have a bio and a photo, and so you'll get to know her that way if she's not here presently.
Okay, well, I don't see her yet, so we like to do guests first. We don't consider Mr. Colleen a guest anymore, so do you want to go in order and maybe start with the reopening, and then we'll go through the presentations afterwards, if that makes sense? Do you want to, do you want to start with continued business, Dr. Daley, and maybe do a quick reopening, Fall 2021 update?
Sure, that sounds great. All right, so I'm going to bring you through just an update with respect to what's happening in terms of our case numbers for COVID-19. We have had, continued to have a few positive cases in the schools. We're at 19 positive cases so far since school opened. Sort of a spread among the five schools, yeah, I'm sorry, the distribution, not a spread, but the distribution of the positive cases among the schools that's shared out in the dashboard. I've been sharing updates at least weekly with everyone, and the dashboard is updated as they come in, so if anyone wants to see the daily numbers, they can always do that as well. There are, we're still seeing transmission within families, so many of those 19 are somewhat, you know, within the same household, but we are not seeing any evidence of any transmission at school, which is good. And so, the mitigation strategies that we have in place with masks and distancing continue to work well to protect students and staff at school.
Dr. Daley, Dr. Daley, very quick, just on that point before we move on. What, can you give an idea of how many close contacts? I know that how a close contact is defined is much different this year, and the quarantining and, you know, being out of school is much lower. Can you give any idea about with those 19 cases, the volume of other students that might have had to be out and missing school from those cases?
Yes, it's a great question. I'm trying to gather some more information about the exact numbers of close contacts. It's sort of somewhat anecdotal at this point, because I've just asked case by case, but for example, the hood school, just the other day, there were three close contacts that were able to remain in school due to test and stay. So, I would say that what I've been observing is three to five students in each of those cases, because typically, the only close contacts are really at lunch, so usually, it's the people sitting either side of you at lunch when you're unmasked. So, for each of those 19, there's usually two or three other people, and out of those group, those that are fully vaccinated and are full, close contacts, so most of the high school students have not needed to be quarantined, and then everyone else at middle school and elementary school has had the option for test and stay, and just about everyone has opted for test and stay, if not everyone. And even if they hadn't selected it up to that point, a lot of people had made that decision then, once they realized that was an option for the students to stay in school. And so, it was a really simple process for them to provide consent if they wanted to, and were able to remain in school. So, I would say we've probably had close to 30 over the, since the beginning of school. We had three on the second day of school, and we've had about 30 or so, but I'm going to try to get those exact numbers from our nurses, but that's, that's a really good number of students who are in school this year who would not have been last year.
Excellent. Thank you.
And so, we have, as I mentioned, we've been doing the test and stay. Our nurses have been doing a fantastic job helping with that. We also have our, we have a substitute nurse who has been here really doing a phenomenal job, pretty much working with our lead nurse, Ms. Greska, so that's Ms. Steele, Nurse Steele, has been taking the lead on the pool testing as far as all the logistics, and I've been working very closely with them as well, and so many people received an email from me and also from, from our school nurses about that process. One thing that we saw through meeting this summer, you know, first of all, this is a major, major undertaking across many, many states, and every district is experiencing the transition of how large this process is becoming. And so, there's been software technology glitches, which did not allow us to roll out pool testing until, until today, but I know that it was successful today, and we're going to have the second, the second group go tomorrow. But we have about 100 staff and about 600 students that are participating, so larger numbers than in the past. But because we got such a great head start in this over the summer, we were able to start, there's a lot of schools that are still not up and running yet with, with test and stay or with symptomatic testing. Because we started some of this last year, and because we started the paperwork with a new company this summer, we're well underway. So, even the delay with pool testing, we're ready to go today. So, this is, this has been great, but quite a lot of work. But the other thing that we saw from the outset was that people might want to differentiate between the different types of tests. So, we designed two different forms. One was for the CIC consent, which they give consent for all three types of testing, and then we had a follow-up form that allowed people to say whether they want it to be included in pool testing, or whether it was just for test and stay or symptomatic. And so, we're glad we did that, because it was about, about 50% were not looking for the routine COVID pool testing, but they did want test and stay. So, we were able to narrow down those groups, figure out exactly who'd given consent, and start calling those students down. The secondary students weren't called down, but they were alerted to the opportunities to come down, and so those students, it's sort of on the, the students to be aware that they need to come down at those specific times. So, that will be tomorrow, starting tomorrow for secondary and little school, and bachelor in hood was today. So, any questions about the testing protocols?
None for me. Anybody? Okay. Thank you, Dr. Daley.
Okay, and then the, the last part would just be the update. We're not going to be able to, to discuss anything tonight as far as any votes, but we could discuss some strategies about the vaccination rate thresholds and the mask mandates. Information was released today ahead of the previous deadline of October 1st. What was done today was, everything was extended until November 1st, so there will be no changes in the mask mandates or the requirements leading into November 1st. But what they have asked us to do is to begin to gather data about the vaccination threshold rates, and so by October 15th, we will need to submit an attestation form to DESI to talk about what our numbers are for staff and student vaccination. And so, my thought would be that we would need to begin to collect this information. If a student or family does not want to provide that information or participate, they would be able to opt out or abstain from sharing that information. Those numbers would then obviously just count as, as unvaccinated against our goal of trying to get to 80%. Now, I know there was discussion as well about whether, even if we got to 80%, what that would look like, and whether we would remove masks for, for those who are vaccinated or not. There's, there's nothing clear or any more clear about what that would look like, whether they would go back to a strong recommendation or not. So, that has not been made any more clear. It still reads as if, if the school hits 80%, then the vaccinated students could unmask. It's also not entirely clear whether the middle school, high school would be viewed as one campus, but all indications seem to be that it would be viewed as one campus based upon the way they define, for example, central office as belonging to the school it's attached to. So, if the central office staff, myself, Michael, Anne Lindell, those folks would be attached to the school, I would assume that that, that also means it's 80% for that entire building, which would also include the unvaccinated sixth graders and the 12 to 15. We're currently at a rate, just based on the town data, the 12 to 15-year-olds have 65% of, of fully vaccinated, and the 16 to 19-year-olds are at 77%. So, they are, they are not in those bands themselves, they're not yet at 80% at this time, and those numbers have somewhat plateaued, so we would need to see, even if we were going to do the schools separately, we would need to see some increase in those numbers. Now, again, those numbers include all individuals in town, not necessarily just the public school students, so we do need to collect that additional information for staff and for students in the schools. And again, that needs to be collected and turned into the Department of Ed by October 15th. So, I'm not sure if there's any questions about this at this time, or any discussions about this topic?
Anybody thoughts, questions? I'll just, I'll just say my statement from my conversations with you, Dr. Daley, as you've updated me about a few things. I just think, I know that we've asked a couple times about, has there been any direction on the whole high school versus middle school, if they're two buildings but one campus? And I will just say that, you know, my, my personal opinion, what are you talking about?
He just covered all of it.
No, sorry, I had to step off for a second, but my personal opinion is no matter what, my personal opinion is no matter what, I think we should be conservative here, because they're going to be mixing, and I think we should take the more conservative stance on this and say that it is one campus, because there is a mixing of this, and so going forward, I personally think the campus should probably have to get to 80% to be considered it. So, that's just from what I've seen. I mean, the fact that I think there was a clarification on the central office versus, you know, the high, the, the building, that it's all one, one unit, I think we should take that guidance, at least for now as a starting point, and say that we assume that the whole campus has to be 80% in order to meet that threshold. That's just my personal opinion on it, and sorry, I did have to step out, because our dog got away for a second, but dog is safe now, if anybody cares, so. Okay, that's just my thoughts on, on the 80%. So, any other thoughts, comments, questions, concerns? Thank you. Other reopening updates, Dr. Daley?
I believe that was all that I had to share at the moment. I don't know, Mr. Connolly, any other updates or, or thoughts on this?
No, I think you covered everything in terms of reopening, and I just think operationally, you know, buses are certainly settling down and going well in terms of the timeliness and the, and the schedule. They've developed a, a patent and things have been, certainly the two tiers with, as I reported at the last meeting, have seemed to be working out, you know, well at this point, which is, which is great. And the food service program is actually performing really well. I'll talk a little bit more about it during the budget update, but certainly just overall pleased to see the participation level to date with a lot of families taking advantage of the universal free eligibility of school mails for, for breakfast and lunch, particularly, particularly during lunch, where over 50% in terms of the, the student population is participating in the school mails program, which is, which is exceptional.
What, I, I saw the 50% number. What is it typically, again, in years past, what's the participation?
So, if you include the standard type A mail plus the sort of the mail equivalents for those students that come up and kind of take some à la carte, but also some lunch items that can be kind of claimed as a male equivalent, we've probably been mid-30s, 30, 35% on a good, on a kind of a good week or a good month. So, the fact that we're averaging over 50%, and then some days we're even at 60 or low 60% is, is really, is really good.
Great. It's great to hear. And I would say that I've heard no complaints since the first couple days about drop-off, pickoff, really buses have been going pretty smoothly. I think the adjustments we've made to time seem to have been, you know, very good, so thank you very much for that.
And I'd just like to echo what Shivie said. I think it's, I think it's going to pay dividends, and we remember, the reason we did all of this was for the, the mental health and well-being of our students with the changes to start times. So, all that's, you know, that we went through is, is working as well as it can. There's still some pieces we're working on, but the overall benefits that we're seeing are going to pay dividends over, over time. So, it was great to hear her check in on that, and I was happy to hear her say that.
Oh, Michael, the only, the last comment, I know, I know there was a small waiting list for certain buses. Has any of that been resolved, or is that?
So, there continues to be at the secondary level, middle school and high school, a waiting list of about 12 students right now.
Across all the buses?
Across all 12 buses.
And all those are late required?
They were all sort of first day, you know, the day before the first day of school, the first day and, and after. So, we've, we're, we're going to try to see if we can potentially open up a few spots in certain areas to get as many of those families on a bus pass that wanted, but it's, we're looking at about a dozen families right now.
Okay. Thank you very much. Any other comments, questions about reopening? Okay. Thank you very much, Dr. Daley and Mr. Connolly. So, for new business, we have an introduction of the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Coordinator, and apparently, Mr. Colleen is giving this to us, so, Mr. Colleen?
Patrick, can you give me permission to share my screen, or who has control of that?
Sure.
They don't give me control of any of that.
I don't want control of it.
I can also do it if it doesn't work. Let me try to see if I can do this.
Can you do it up here, do you think?
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, I got it. You're good.
You got it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Try to move as quickly, I just want to, we can see everything, we're good? All right. Welcome back. It's, it's been a nice opening for school. As we discussed last spring, it's my hope that I'll be able to spend more time, you know, a few times over the course of the year, and be able to share some updates of the great work that our students and faculty staff are doing in North Running Public Schools. Tonight, I want to do a quick introduction or, or an update on the Coordinator of Equity, Diversity, and Inclusion from the SEEM Collaborative. I also want to do a brief overview of the MCAS data that just was released on September 21st, and then just share a little update on where we are with our professional development since June of 2021, heading into the 2021, 2022 school year. We just did that. Just kind of going back in, in where we are as a district, we've done a lot of work with our social justice goals last year, got a lot of great feedback from our faculty on the work that needs to be done in the district, worked with administrators all year, and then again, over the summer, to try to figure out what the next steps would be and who would help us achieve our goals under equity, diversity, and inclusion. The SEEM Collaborative, which provides a lot of special education programming and services, helps us with UDL and many services to the school that can't necessarily retain their own staff, stepped up and posted a position that will be shared between several communities to help us all do this important work. So, the other districts that will be working this year are Linfield, Melrose, Stonemont, Wilmington, and Woburn. The position was posted, myself and Dr. Daley had participated in different levels of interviews, along with other administrators from the other districts, and we were very fortunate to identify, SEEM was to identify and hire Ms. India Barrows. She was invited today. She did let me know that she had a conflict and might not be able to make it this evening, but she's already met with Dr. Daley and myself twice to get ready for this school year, and we're looking forward to work with her as we move forward. She holds a master's degree with a concentration in higher education from AmeriMac College, and she's served over the past four, four and a half, five years as the Assistant Director and Director of Diversity and Inclusion at New England College. She's, the reason why I'm moving K to 12, which made a lot of sense to me, was she wanted to make a difference sooner. You know, she was working at the college at a higher education level. She sees areas that districts and schools and facilities that work with children can make a bigger difference for all students. So, she was excited about making that change in her career. She's relocated to the North Shore and is ready to jump in. Time's out perfectly at the same time, as the district was just notified on Friday that we've been accepted to participate in a teacher diversification professional learning community with the Department of Education, and Ms. Barrows has already committed to, to work with the district team as a participating member of that team and the work that goes. And that, that will look like 10, two and a half hour virtual professional learning community meetings over the course of the school year. It will involve administration, a teacher, possibly some human resource, whoever that person might be for this district, and then if you have a Director of Inclusion and Diversity, they can participate as well. So, those are some of the goals that we're hoping to achieve with the position. It's the work that myself and every educator in the district need to carry forward, and we're looking forward to using Ms. Barrows as a great resource and a consultant to help us achieve what we feel is in the best interest of North Running Public Schools and their students. Any questions about that position or that teacher diversification program?
No, welcome to Ms. Barrows, and so, so, just to be clear, so SEEM has more than six-member districts, so it's just these six-member districts?
Correct.
But her official employer is SEEM Collaborative, and we are just the ones that pay and receive the services?
That's absolutely correct. Similar, if you, I think that we've talked about Emily Pat and the work that she's done with us in UDL. They create the position, they fund the position, they offer it out to the participating districts. If you go in, that becomes the cost share, and then you move forward and then figure out how to share the time and the responsibility and the work. I, one of the things that we really liked about it was the ability to work with these other districts in this topic as well, because you have communities very similar to North Running, you have communities that are very different than North Running, so we can learn from each other and share a lot of the resources and responsibilities. So, it's a, it's an exciting time participating in this work.
I think, I think, I mean, just commenting on what you just said, I think that's actually an interesting thing that I haven't thought about, where part of me was like, well, she has to spend time in other districts, but a lot of the issues that are going to be addressed are beyond just North Running borders, and so I think it is kind of nice to have surrounding communities all working together on the challenges and, and seeing how other districts handle it, rather than just having your own district, you know, knowledge. So, I think that's actually a really good, good way to think about this role, is that it's, you know, it's a, it's a broader problem, and, you know, having ideas from, from neighboring districts will actually be, in some ways, better than just having our own person only looking at North Running. Okay.
Excellent. Just to kind of give you the 30,000 view, view from the MCAS results, you know, first, we want to recognize and celebrate the professional effort. first, we want to recognize and celebrate the professional efforts of our educators and families to best meet the seeds, the needs of our students during a pandemic. You know, when the state confirmed that we actually would be administering the MCAS, a lot of people have a lot of strong feelings of the value and the worth and the time that was invested in in implementing the assessment. They did. We were very successful with our our testing policies. We had a very high participation rate that I'll share with you again later. Now we have, we have data that we didn't have before to take a look at, see what the story is with that, to analyze and compare with other available data that we have to drive our instructional decisions and planning. And then for twenty, using this data for this upcoming school year, we're going to look, we're starting to have that conversation about acceleration versus remediation, how to look at some of the unfinished learning that might have occurred due to the school closure in March two thousand and twenty twenty through the hybrid until we return full return in person. So being able to look at that and then still stay on grade level and content standards with just right supports to make sure students are successful. A reminder, just on the what the two thousand and twenty one MCAS administration, they did modify some of those. So when we look at the data and be able to move forward, they extended the timeline, which was, you know, you would think it actually would provide you more time and days for learning to impact the success of student learning. But just a reminder that our students were in one hundred and seventy school days last year with the hybrid model and the in time learning, it it worked out. But it definitely was a benefit that they gave us more time to have students in classrooms before administering those tests. In students in grades three to eight, where they're usually will take two sessions for each content area, ELA math and ST, science, technology and engineering, they only participated in one session. And then what they did across the state is one student would take session one, the next student would take session two. So all the results, when they pulled them all together, was probably about like of a full MCAS assessment, about fifty percent of the testing that they would have had because students only took one. But they're still reporting that with that volume of responses, information that the data is valuable and valid to be able to use it in moving forward in comparison. Students in grades three and eight that were learning remotely could take computer tests at home. Approximately, it was about eighteen point six percent in the state took it remotely. In North Reading, it was about two percent. Most, we did a really nice job, our administrators in our schools worked super hard with families that students were staying home for whatever the reason may be, to create a safe testing environment for for students to be able to come in, feel comfortable, and proctor the test in school. But a small percentage did participate at home, and that went successfully with very little disruption. There'll be a new parent guardian report for grades three to eight that will detail that a little bit more for them when they receive that. Those, I'm expecting that we'll receive those parent guardian reports by the end of this week, with the hope that we can get them in and turn them out and send them home to families in early October. And then the other important factor, remember, is there were no accountability designations this year, so you're not going to see any schools or districts punished for performance. Everybody maintained their same recognition level. The state's narrative from the Department of Education is, it's actually, the the data's been helpful. It has kind of told the story that ELA, this is state data that you're looking at right now, every grade level in both ELA math and I think in science had a slight decrease in that meeting and exceeding expectations trend, with the exception of grade ten ELA, which did see a three percent increase. So when you take a look at the work and the results in there, that's where the state averages are for ELA, anywhere from three through eleven percent for eighth grade. It's not uncommon when you look at the deviation between school years that you'll see little dips by the student population taking tests similar to what you're seeing in that ELA, that eleven percent's a little high. So just to compare it to state in North Reading, you can see that we we did better than the state average and trends in both areas in ELA. But the great thing about our district and what we're able to do with the data is the work that we can do identifying the students who may have struggled and shifted from two thousand and nineteen performance or what we believe their performance to be, to just remember that this is just one set of data that we use to analyze student learning. We have other data available just to compare and contrast. Yes?
Mr. Colleen, was there any, was there any note about students that were cohort D or like full remote learning? Was there any, anything done on the state level? I mean, with only two percent here, but that was two percent that took it in remotely.
Correct, yeah.
Cohort D was larger than that. Was there anything noted about students that were full remote, about if there was any performance difference from students that were hybrid or full in person?
In my, in my scan of the released data that was publicly available, no. That being said, it would be something that we would be able to to drill down with that data. So I can take a look at that and be sure to share an update the next time they have a meeting, just as a, as a, a point of interest, because it's a, it's an interesting question.
Yeah, and and the other one would also be like, you know, I, I, one thing we were, we all expressed concerns about during the hybrid, hybrid time was whether or not students on IEPs and, you know, that needs that have special needs, whether they were falling further behind than other students. So my concern would be, if you see a five percent decrease, is that a five percent decrease primarily from PEEP students that were already struggling, that are further behind now, or whether it's some kids that might have been, you know, on level or now below level?
I, the, in the Department of Education presentation, the communication on that, and I, we have not drilled down to subgroup yet at this time, has been that the trends are consistent from the subgroups to the splits. That being said, does that create a little bit more work to support that student learning? Yes, it does, without a doubt. But I think that's a problem pre-COVID and pre-hybrid as well.
Thank you.
So ELA was, you know, what the department says, we're not, we're in pretty good shape. There's still work to do, we're going to be moving forward and addressing that. They are drawing a little bit more attention to the math side. So you see how these, these, the meeting exceeding trends jump considerably. And it's not, it's not surprising, you know, as far as exposure to reading and literature and conversations and language that you have in everyday life and you continue to progress and move forward versus direct instruction in math, practice, reteaching, support in class time. So I don't think anybody is surprised by this unfinished learning in math, but it is good data to help us drive ourselves forward as we start to look at that learning. And so you see again in the, in the state, the North Reading has has outperformed or is consistent with the state averages, with minimal disruption at the high school, at the element, the three to eight, see that twelve percent versus that fifteen, which is allowed, we're allowed to work with our math leaders and start to look at the different strategies we're going to use to accelerate identified student learning, to try to make sure that they can be as successful as possible. Yes, sir.
I would just call out on this, though, the one only, very concerning on the math, but the only positive here is the partially meeting is almost all of the increase in North Reading, as opposed to going all the way to not meeting. It's only an increase of one percent out of that twelve percent. It's mostly the people that are partially meeting, so hopefully that means with a little extra work, we can get most of the students back to, you know, meeting, meeting expectations.
I agree. I, I think in a lot of the data that you looked at, you see the changes. I mean, the the doubles and the the not meeting, that was tough, but we did have students who struggled through remote learning and participation through there. So there, there is work that we need to be doing, but the good news is we know who those students are and we're prepared to do that work. So this, I left here for you, this is the bigger one, this one gets a little bit more. And I will share this, I'm sorry that I, it didn't make it in the packet, but I'll make sure that Patrick gets the link to you on the presentation, because this is hyperlinked in. This is the, one of the ones that I always use as a building administrator that allows you to drill down in grade level. And that's why I only reported three to eight, just because when you get into the, when you start to drill down the data, you're getting to, to the minutia. But it is helpful to look. Things that I loved was the high participation rate. You know, when we talk about MCAS testing and state assessments and and through all this work, and and it wasn't asked for our students and our families to have this high level, that participation rate is very consistent with pre-COVID, you know, if not better, you know. So it was, I think people were really concerned about what their kids had. The trends with the state data are the same, but we're outperforming state averages. We need to use our iReady tests and other common assessments to look at our multiple measures just to make sure it wasn't a bad day or a bad test. We'll be able to, I strongly believe we'll be able to maintain our high expectations and scaffold learning objectives and provide just right supports for students. And then we need to figure out how to best progress monitor to measure student learning and growth. So we have ideas of where the students that we're focusing on have made gains prior to the next MCAS administration. If that's shared, that's a, that chart is a hyperlink, which lets you go in and then you can manipulate and start to get into more. And this is all publicly available data. I stayed with those reports for you that you can find right under Desi's new front-facing website, that it takes me now a little bit longer to find everything that I once knew where it was. And just to kind of go a little bit more visual, we went through and looked at, so this will let you just kind of see it a little differently with the two thousand and nineteen ELA performance level. We like to go visual with our data for, to to meet the different needs of people, and here's your two thousand and twenty one. So like we talked about, that pie goes through, you see very little change in that work when you kind of go through there. Then when you go to the math, as Mr. Buckley already kind of highlighted by quickly looking at the data, you can see we get a little bit more green, you know, a little less blue. So, you know, I think that 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 story of just that trickle down, you know, some of the students that we're able to keep in the exceeding probably slid down to the the meets expectations, and then some of the kids that worked really hard to meet expectations fell a little bit below. But the not meeting expectations went up. I mean, that's two percent, that's a few students to pay attention to. So I, I think it's always good to be able to look at it visually as well. Yes, sir.
Will you know if someone actually dropped two levels? I mean, you have that information as well.
From a two thousand and nineteen test, to know where, what they took, and if they did, yeah, we'd be able to pick up on that. And our averages are all above the meets expectations in every grade and every group over that five hundred cut score, which is nice. This is the other, just one other way that kind of breaks down the grade ten from two thousand and nineteen and the percentiles for the district. This is another one that when I share with you as a tool, it's hyperlink, so you can see each grade level going through there. I always remind people, it's one set of data, it's great to be able to look at. The questions that come up when you look at data are always helpful to discuss, because sometimes you're not thinking about the right questions. So feel free to tinker when you get that turn to be able to go through that. And you would see under the other grades, because the high schools only be doing the next generation assessment since two thousand and nineteen, you'll see multiple grade levels for three to eight and be able to see that all the way through. Data now what? So this kind of puts through, along with the acceleration roadmap, a way for us to be able to look at data. The state very clearly kind of warns, don't go comparing district to district, because every situation is different from how many days were you in hybrid, how many days were you in person, how many times did you have to go full remote. So to spend our time with our dark districts and looking at other communities, it wouldn't be worthwhile. It's really meant for a diagnostic for for us as a, as a school district to be able to look at the standards. And and by kind of using these questions, is this what we hope to do in some of our professional development on October eighth, is to kind of look at trends and performance, to be able to look at the number of students that miss the same standards if we, meaning that they might have, that might be some of that unfinished learning, and we have to figure out how to embed that back into our instruction to strengthen student performance. And then the reveals students perform low across, so that, kind of like Mr. McGowan was saying, if we have to pay attention to the students that may have dropped considerably or were low all the way across each test, to make sure that we have a better handle of where they are and where they go. And then kind of go through that next set of questions to go through there. So it really helps us, the the big, the big piece of the acceleration roadmap, which I really like, is the sense of belonging component, which is the first step, and that's where we kind of approached the school year, is making sure that our students were welcomed back, felt safe, didn't return right to the fast pace and rigor of where we are, we wanted to establish. I had a high school student mention to me in conversation about the number of teachers that sent out surveys to learn about how they like to learn or to learn about how they don't like to learn, to talk about what accommodations they may benefit from. And the student was impressed in walking away that teachers were asking the children in front of them about what they need to be successful. And I jokingly said, okay, just make sure you feel that way in a month. You know, like to be able to go through that. And I haven't checked back, but I will be sure to do so. So teachers are aware of where our our regulation is and how important it is that we pay attention to where our students are to support their learning. And then to be able to allocate additional resources and professional development coaching to the areas that we find the greatest needs of concern. And I haven't, you know, identified those areas with, we're doing a lot of work with the structures that we have, but we have not outside of the social emotional with the additional counseling and some of the interventionist positions, we haven't added a lot of coaches or additional resources for student learning at this time. Just a reminder on competency determination for students of two thousand and twenty two, they weren't required to participate in MCAS, many did, for scholarship considerations. They will use the successful completion of a relevant high school course. There's a whole drill down to to be able to code that and make that work. And then in the class of two thousand and twenty three, all those students will then return to the MCAS administration this year and be expected to score at the scores listed above. And then option two would be if they fell a little bit below, they would have an educational proficiency plan, which will help those students achieve the task and demonstrate competency. And then just the last, yes?
Well, before we go to the
Yep.
next topic, so I, I don't know if anybody else has questions on the MCAS part first?
I do.
Rich, want to go first?
So I, I have more comments, I guess. I thought it was interesting what you were saying and what the state was saying about the data, not using it for cross district comparisons. It seems to me that the data then becomes sort of its purest form of of actually learning about your students and where they're at as opposed to trying to figure out where the district is at compared to other districts. So I, I think that makes the whole, the whole effort of last year worthwhile. So I'm glad that we pushed through with that. And can you talk a little bit more about acceleration versus remediation, which is way back at the beginning of what you're talking about, and 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 how you're getting to that determination and and what exactly you mean by it?
So I don't know, I'm sure Dr. Daly has mentioned the acceleration roadmap from the Department of Education. It's a document that I can share with you as well, and and it's something that we've just introduced in concept to our educators in moving forward. So it's, for us right now, the way we're looking at it is identifying where our students need more support. But instead of being in sixth grade and going back and teaching a fourth grade standard, we are trying to identify sixth grade standards and practice different skills. So you're staying at the grade level standard, so you're not, so the gap doesn't increase, right? If we spend more time in in a grade that we're not in, we're losing more time of the grade that that we're in, and then we start to go there. So the culture shift of acceleration from remediation, we still have some work to do from understanding how to best do that, how to break down the standards and make the connection. Some of your curriculum and programs will actually do a nice job of helping teachers make that connection. But we do a lot of work that is teacher-created materials and understanding when we're going through and looking at those standards.
Okay, so it's really about getting from, away from remediation and moving towards acceleration, is that correct?
And a follow-up on that one, though. For math in particular, isn't that difficult because it builds on it? Are we just going to have kids that don't remember, don't know anything about fractions? And we're just going to say, the heck with fractions, they'll never need them, let's move to the next?
You know what? I think the hard thing with that, and when you're looking at skill-based versus standard-based education is, is, I'll use fact fluency, for example. Like some students really struggle with fact fluency, for whatever reason. And we can spend a lot of time to try to get them to be more fluent in facts. But if we don't continue to expose them to the grade level standards that they can practice their fact fluency and, and work within there, I don't know if we're best serving the students. So without a, without a doubt, practice of previously learned math skills is always a part of every program. You know, you're putting in a couple of review questions or work like that, but it's always making sure that you're being, you're accessing and participating in that grade level standard with those just right supports to be successful of.
Okay. Richard, other questions?
Nope, that's great, thanks.
Chris, questions? You good? Diana? Janine? So my, I have a few questions and thoughts and borders on getting where I don't want to get to, which is a higher level discussion about MCAS. But I, I do want to ask a couple of specific questions. Number one, none of us really knew if MCAS was going to happen last year. So was the preparation different last year from the teachers? I mean, I don't know that we really want to hear that you're teaching to the MCAS, but was there, was there any difference last year in preparation in advance of the MCAS versus typical years?
No, I, I mean, I think we believe our teachers are teaching the standards and that are in front of them, and that's what the MCAS is assessing. So if you stick to the standards, your students will perform well. I think the other piece to that, that is all common as far as academic learning is vocabulary experience from assessment, but we did not, I, you know, we really put no outside administrative connection to, let's just take the test and get the data and see where our kids are, because we were struggling with the planning and the teaching and the learning and the implementation. So we were kind of, you know, let's, let's see where the data takes us and kind of get that information.
And then the two, the two thinking ahead questions. First one is, last year was less in, in terms of testing? There weren't as many hours or weren't as many questions? Has there been any discussion about going forward, possibly reducing the amount of testing?
Right, yeah, that's a great question. Right now, I've heard that the plan is to return, but it's, it's early. I mean, just watching where everything is and, and I appreciate the information from the state to help us prepare, but that could easily change as we continue to move forward. I think they got a lot of positive feedback from districts about the reduced testing. But I, I, right now, I haven't heard a confirmation on that plan.
And then similar even further, I had read something somewhere, I have no idea where it was, but read something somewhere about a discussion about not having MCAS be the determination for graduation anymore. Can you, oh, can you talk, speak to that at all?
I would, but it, I don't think it'd be worth our time right now. You know, like looking at, for example, in science, they're looking at different performance tasks that they might be able to complete. They also pilot a civics assessment this year, as we haven't had any social studies test. So it was a performance based, there was a, a multiple choice, a multiple choice test assessment as part of it, but there was also some project-based work that the classrooms at our eighth grade did participate. So I think they're using different avenues to assess student learning, to see if they can get the same result from that. Similar, they're, they're really trying to do the same type of project-based demonstration of competency for teacher licensure as well. And we're expecting something to be coming out from that. So there is a, an interest in, I just don't know how far they'll go and, and how much to, to describe.
This is just interesting, because the conversation before, we're talking about UDL and trying to do a lot of learning throughout the school year, outside of just tests. And then at the very end, there's a test in order to be able to get the diploma. And again, I'm not, I'm not trying to get into a broad debate about it, but just wondering if there's any discussion that you've heard about any changes and?
There are discussions and conversations to practice is a whole different story. And I will keep you updated.
Thank you very much.
And then just a quick update, just in the end of 2021, we really focused just on professional development, just so you know what we're doing, is staying connected with our students. We had a couple of really well-received keynote speakers. Dr. Jody Carrington came and did a session on connecting with those we teach, lead and love. And then Dr. Kalise Warnum, which I think some of the school committee members were invited to be able to attend, did a understanding cultural proficiency. Our themes for PD for last year and kind of continuing into this year, along with the interest-based professional development, our along self-care, being able to take care of yourself before you're able to take care of your students, to understand that you know what you need before you're asking what your students. Culturally responsive teaching is giving as many exposure and education to our teachers to help them. There, there's a really strong interest. That's why I'm, I'm excited about Ms. Barrows and the work that she's going to do, because she'll be able to kind of give us, help us with our strategic plan to get from a start to an end and the work that we want to do, and how to assess and evaluate the progress that we've made for our students and our community. And then universal design of learning at all levels. We've had administrators and teachers participated in a professional development, three credit class with Dr. Katie Novak on UDL and social emotional learning and equity, which was very well received as well. I know Dr. Daley's a big fan because she travels with her DJ for her professional development. So she's, for breaks, you're able to make requests. Over the summer, we had a great administrative retreat for two days. We won't focus mostly on NRPS 2025, multi-tiered system of support and the acceleration roadmap. And then we followed up with our first extended leadership retreat day, which involved all of our curriculum leaders and special education leaders in the district. So we had 45 educators in here on August 17th, kind of doing that next level of work with NRPS 2025, really looking at district and school improvement planning, kind of aligning the work that we're doing with the district, to the school, to our individual education. I think you'll see a lot of coherence in that work this year that we're pretty proud of. And then introduce the multi-tiered system of support and the acceleration roadmap. But I will say at a very, very introduction level with the educators. We have professional development days on September 1 and November 2, and those are the half-days that we have. And then finally, just one other, in our new educator induction, so we have our mentors, we, we had our 15 new teachers came for a two-day retreat this summer as well. But then we also support our new educators in years two and three as part of our new educator induction program. Last year, I talked to you a little bit about a striving for equity course that we put into play for 25 administrators and educators that was very well received. This year, I'm happy to report that all year two and three educators will be participating in this class as part of their induction program. So that is identified as a big rock for the district. We're offering a, a high-level, focused professional development opportunity for educators to work together to look at culturally competent teaching, breaking down racial inequities and striving for an equitable curriculum. That is all.
Question?
I can go as fast as I can.
Questions, comments? Another question that I would have, Mr. Kaline, is I know last year, all teachers had the same two goals, you know, one based on digital learning or remote learning, one based on diversity and inclusion and equity. Did this year, is it the same? Does everybody have similar ones, or does everybody have their own, their own goals?
Great question. In, in a system, when we, everybody's usually in a two-year plan. Last year, to make it easy, we kind of went off on our own and did a set of one-year plan and kind of created the banks for them to choose from, and they worked together to create the goals under those two umbrellas. We had to break out of that this year. So we're returning the two-year plan. We surveyed the teachers. They were able to choose whether they wanted to stay with their goals for another year, so actually make that like the second year of their plan. So that would be their two-year plan, or create new goals. We nuanced that to get the 50, close to 50, you know, 55%, so you have them in different years and cycles, because the amount of work that's associated with that is different by each year. And then the educators who stayed with their goals, like the ones that I've been working with, have been really looking at adjusting or updating that hybrid learning, blended learning goal to kind of make it a little bit more measurable for a student, to count it as a student learning goal. So that's been the greatest challenge. The educators have been great, they've appreciated the flexibility. We've even, I know some of the supervising evaluators asked if some would mind moving to a, you know, just a balance, and that's gone very well.
Thank you very much. See, somebody told me once, when somebody comes to present, they like questions, so I'm sorry.
No, I'm here all night. I was so excited to see Michael Connelly's car here when I came ripping up the hill.
Okay. So moving on, I think the next one, which is, I think, it's not on our big agenda, but I think the NREA memorandum of agreement. So Dr. Daley, do you want to speak about the NREA memorandum of agreement?
I would. I just wanted to take just a moment to thank Mr. Kaline for a great presentation. He's so much better than the last guy doing this stuff, so it's really come a long way. I really appreciate that. But it was very thorough. He's done a fantastic job transitioning and really taken the, the lead on so many of these things in a, in a difficult and challenging year, trying to plan professional development virtually remotely, and, and still moving us forward in so many ways. So I really want to thank him for that. And it's, it's been great working with him, just as a, not only for everything he does, but also for everything he does for me, to, to troubleshoot everything we've done. So thank you so much for that presentation. And just to address your question, Mr. Buckley, about the competency determination, I've been on a committee with the Department of Ed to revisit those requirements and what those look like. So that group is set to reconvene this fall, and I can keep you, I can provide updates as appropriate on that status. There's really, there's many arguments on both sides about whether there needs to be a standardized minimum and, and whether that, you know, helps or hurts students with disabilities, students of color and, and so many different minorities. So there's a lot of great discussion, debate about whether having these standards, you know, helps or hurts students. So I'll keep you posted.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Kaline.
Similarly, with the, the memorandum of agreement, it has been a great effort by our administrative team, as well as Peter Kane from the NREA, who's the president, Shelley Kerrigan, who's the vice president, Barbara Minter is the other vice president. They've been putting in a lot of hours, working with, with me and with Michael and Sean and others to craft an agreement that we feel is a great document to help us through some of the challenges this year. The additional issues created by COVID-19, especially the quarantine and the, the needs for just additional supports this year, both for staff and students due to COVID-19. So we, we came up with something that we feel is, you know, will, will look, again, keep, continue to move the district forward, but yet recognizes that there is something that is still above and beyond this year that we need to, to recognize with COVID-19. So my understanding is this document was ratified today by the NREA, and we did share it tonight with the committee. And my recommendation is that we vote to approve this document for this year.
Okay, so why don't we get this on there? I mean, my, my only comment in, when we looked at it earlier, was I, I think we're missing a couple of words in four. I don't know, if it's already been ratified by the other side, though, I don't know. I don't know if we can, we should do it, just to prove it as it is, or?
I think we can just, if there's typos in the, in it, we can just fix the typos. I think there's no substantive changes.
No.
Just some, some incomplete, it, it could even be the version I, you know, what I copied that and what I shared might have not captured all the, the most recent track changes. So I'm sure those, those issues can be reconciled.
Yeah, so I mean, substantively, I'm fine with the agreement. I think it's just in number four, the first section, I think, I think we're just missing like a will.
Second, 4B, right?
Yeah, 4B.
4B, I think, is the only thing that is, needs to be, that, that first sentence that I noticed.
Yeah, and again, it's just to make the language clearer, not, not to change any substance.
I think we're just missing a word or two. So other than that, can we have a motion to approve the NREA memorandum of agreement?
I move that we approve the NREA memorandum of agreement.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion from, or should we, should we clarify regarding reopening of schools for 2021, 2022 school year?
I amend my motion to match your language.
Thank you.
And I can, I second that.
Okay, any discussion on it? Guess we're all in, we can just do, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Unanimous, five zero. Thank you very much. Okay, the next one is town meeting warrant articles. I don't know if everyone's going to be there or not. I know Mrs. Imbrano cannot make it on, on Monday. And Dr. Daley, do we know yet exactly where it's going to be? I know it's going to be at the campus. Are we sure yet where it's going to be?
It's going to be in the, the gymnasium.
Okay, be in the gymnasium on Monday night. We will, if we have a quorum, we will come to, we will meet at 6:45. But I always think it's nice to be able to vote five zero on things. And the one, there are a couple of budgetary changes that might be there, but there's no specifics on it yet, so we can't vote on that yet. But the one that I do think is important, we've heard for a number of years now, an update on the Northeast Metropolitan Regional Vocational School District's new school project that's coming. Mr. McGowan and I both attended the select board meeting last week, where they were going over the warrant articles, and the select board at that meeting voted to, you know, recommend this article five zero. And I think we should also vote to recommend article 16. So I would love to see, hear a motion to recommend article 16 on the town warrant.
Second it.
A motion by Janine, a second by Chris. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous, five zero. Thank you all. Is there anything else that we think we should be heard on? I don't think so, other than maybe the operating budget, but?
The only thing, the only thing about this that, I think that we should be sure is clear to everyone is, is the, how the, how the apportionment of the debt service works on that. Because it, there, I thought there was still some confusion in the, in the school, in the select board meeting. And if it does come up in, in the town, in the, uh, town meeting, then it, it should be very clearly described how it does work.
Yeah.
But I don't think it's a big deal, but it, it's a, you know, there's a lot of, it is, gets pretty confusing there.
Well, and, and I mean, just to elaborate on that, what was, what was, I think clarified by the Northeast Metropolitan Superintendent, was that the amount that we're voting on, the $8 million over 30 years, we have a share that is allocated to North Reading, but that is a share based on the current percentage and number of students that are there. If North Reading's participation in the school goes up or goes down, then the dollar amount that would be owed per our district would be adjusted as it is right now. So currently?
But within a very narrow, a fairly narrow window. I think that's the main thing, is that
Yeah.
there's a, there's a sort of built-in cap based on, because we are only allowed so many slots, so
Yeah.
it can't go up by a, a material, I mean, a meaningful amount.
Correct. And what's interesting about North Reading is we're allotted a certain number of spots. There's a long waitlist there, and North Reading doesn't use all of its spots right now. So we actually could send more students there. We don't do it. And so the new building will allow a larger capacity. Since we're not even meeting the number that we have right now, the anticipation would be, this is kind of was one of the discussions, was that if there's another 300 or 400 students that are there, the percentage of North Reading will probably be even a smaller percentage.
Right.
Because, you know, presumably, it's not that we have a bunch of people at North Reading that aren't able to attend there, because we actually have open slots that are being given to other districts.
Yeah.
So?
Hopefully, hopefully, the, the condition of the building itself and, and the programs, I mean, they, they've done a, the offerings, they've done a great job, obviously, maintaining them as well as they can, but that could be one of the reasons why we don't get as much participation. So that may go up a little bit, but no, I agree with you in general.
Yeah, I mean, that was the other point, that like, maybe if the shiny new building, more people will want to attend it, so maybe we'll use more of the slots, but
But again, it's a, it's a, it's, the, the range of that it could vary is pretty, pretty narrow, I think.
Yeah. But ultimately, I think we all in the select board all support the new building.
I was pleased that they were I was pleased that they, they were very enthusiastically about it.
Yes. Okay. Thank you all. That's the main things that we have tonight. For minutes, we're going to move on to routine matters. Minutes, if I, Mrs. Imbriano, maybe, do a motion to accept our minutes?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to accept the executive session minutes of September 13, 2021, as written.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, and we have a second. Any comments, changes, errors?
Not that I saw.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Unanimous.
I'd also like to make a motion to accept the open session, regular meaning minutes of September 13, 2021, also as written.
Second.
Okay, again, any comments, questions, changes?
Not that I saw.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Unanimous. Budget update, Mr. Connolly?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Buckley. So in your packet this evening was the, is really the first budget update for fiscal year '22. That should read fiscal year '22 for the month of September. And it's essentially summarizes financial activity through the middle of September. Again, reflected on the report is activity through expenses and payroll data. So as we kind of approach the conclusion of the first quarter of the fiscal year, July through September, I, I think we continue to be in a solid financial standing. We were able to do some things at the end of fiscal year '21, as you may recall, as we closed out the fiscal year 2021 budget, to certainly put ourselves in good standing with many of kind of the special revenue and revolving accounts, as well as doing things with prepaying special education tuitions as we've normally done so. So we exceeded the amount that we had forecasted during the FY '21 budget process. So that has certainly allowed us some additional level of flexibility and to address some, some unforeseen costs as they arise. But, you know, we, I will note that we have had a couple of additional outside placements, you know, due to, you know, student move-ins and just, you know, identifying student needs that have come up since the, the budget was appropriated, which has added to the cost. But certainly, because we, we, we did far exceed the amount that we forecasted this year, we, we forecasted a higher amount, you know, close to $200,000 as prepayments, and we more than doubled that in terms of what we prepaid. So that does, that does add to our level of, of flexibility as we are in fiscal year '22. We've done a lot of the necessary startup expenses, all the departments and schools have, have purchased the, the materials that they need, and we're certainly working on continuing to encumber the, the funds based on their discretionary and departmental budgets. We've certainly encumbered a lot of the operational expenses, like utilities and gas and electricity, and we'll just continue to monitor these accounts as we normally do so. But on the payroll side, certainly, everything is certainly within budgeted ranges, and has been no, no major surprises. And we'll just continue to, to monitor the impacts of leave of absences and, and the need to cover and appoint some long-term substitutes, which has come up, but it's been nothing that is not within what we have budgeted or forecasted at this, at this point. I reported earlier that the food service program has been one's kind of highlight over the first few weeks of the school year. We haven't really closed out the month of September yet, obviously, but the, the data is trending and the revenue has been really good each day. The daily sales revenue is, has been increasing and the participation has been great. So, you know, if these trends continue and the participation continues to be high, over 50%, then our projections is that the, the program will not only do really well this month, but if it continues throughout the school year, we should certainly end, end with a good, healthy balance in the food service account, which would be a great, great to see. So I think overall, you know, through, through the middle of September, and we're in solid financial standing, we've certainly had some new costs that have come up in certain areas. I, I mentioned the special education on a district area, but we remain in good position to address these unforeseen costs as well. So with that, I'll open it up to any questions.
Questions?
What's the situation with, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
With the, the regular daily substitutes. I know the market, the...
So we, I think we're in pretty good, good shape with our regular daily substitutes. We, we have, we, every school, we, we remain with the model that we appointed last year. With the pandemic, we had two building subs that reported to each school each day. That was received very well. The principals certainly had much positive feedback on that approach. So we, we kept that approach, and we increased the, allocated more funds into the budget to, at minimum, have, have two daily substitutes reporting to each school. The high school filled that remaining open position a few days into school, so all, all of those positions have been, have been filled. And then we do have a, I would say, a, a healthy pool of on-call subs that we needed do, do get, are getting called. So I think we're, we're in good shape, good shape there, and I, I see that playing out well and staying, at the moment, staying within, in budget.
Great. Mr. McGowan, still my first question. Second question would be on revolving accounts. Are they, how's the bus in particular and athletic? I mean, how are they doing? I, I know that, I know that at the end of last year, we were trying to do some things to make them
Correct.
More stable for this year, but are they pretty good?
So, they're, they're doing well. So what, certainly with the end of last year, we were able to, to maybe spend a little bit more out of the general fund, given some of the savings we were able to realize. So that's certainly added to their, you know, a relatively healthy rollover balance. But the, the transportation account is in, is in good, good standing. We certainly, with the increase in the number of, of bus ridership and user fees, or bus passes, I'm sorry, that, that were, were sold, we're not quite at the, sort of the pre-pandemic level, but we certainly saw a, a return to families desiring a bus pass. So that account was back up to where we would see it, close to, you know, an annual amount of about $200,000 that we've been, that we're collecting. And I think last year was about $125,000. So we saw that rebound, which was great. And the athletic revolving account is, is doing well. We certainly were able to roll over a good balance. We were able to save last year, just with some of the shortened seasons and the less transportation and busing that was occurring. We did experience some savings, so that, that account is in good balance. And the, the fall season participation was right where we anticipated and expected it, with over 300 students participating in fall sports. So we, we are in good shape with all those accounts.
And our only comment would just be on the special education. I just think it's important to note on the record, as you mentioned, that there were some unanticipated out-of-district placements. But I think it's really important why, you know, we tried to make the prepayments, because if we didn't do that, and, you know, we had to dip into our other funds available, or go to the special account that was set up jointly with the select board, it's just, I, I think it's just notes the importance of pre-planning for these things, because they do happen. And so I think it's really great that you have pushed us to try to fund and, and prepay when we can, so that we, you know, don't have to impact this year's learning for the district or any, any other account in order to, you know, pay for our obligations. So I think that's, you know, it, it's just good to point out that the pre-planning really does work, so.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Staffing update, none at this time, Dr. Daly?
None at this time, correct.
Bidding donations, none at this time. Subcommittee update, finance planning team met on September 14th. Mr. McGowan, would you like to update us?
We met, we talked. It was glorious. We spent, we spent a lot of time talking about the, that warrant article, the
Sewers.
Mostly, mostly about the sewers, yeah, that's right. I was kind of, maybe you predicted better, because I was in and out.
You were in and out.
As an appointment, yeah.
Forgot that, yeah. Yeah, I mean, I think, we, the, the finance planning team met just to go over the warrant articles, and we're meeting again to kind of finish up on that. The three, the three main topics, just to, going to give you an update on what's coming. The one that we voted on tonight was mentioned, and, you know, there was, again, support for that. The big one is going to be a discussion on sewers, and there's an opportunity for the town to kind of combine our, you know, potential work with some work that's happening on 114 in North Andover. So they're trying to connect, but there's, at this town meeting, there's going to be a vote to approve the first $3 million of the project in order to approve a study to figure out
Well, to complete, a, a lot of the design.
Correct. The design and study is correct, and to make sure that, you know, to figure out exactly how it would work. Then there'll be a discussion more on like where the fund, you know, whether there's some state and federal grants available. The overall price tag for the project right now is about $116 million, but they think there'll be some funding and grants and other things available. But that's what we were talking about first. There was surprisingly no discussion at the, at the select board meeting with the public the, on that issue.
Yeah.
There was just a lot of discussion at select board about possibly granting land for
Yeah.
For, for low-income housing, for affordable housing. But that's what we talked about at the finance planning meeting.
Yep.
Okay. Were there any other subcommittees that have met?
None at this time.
Okay, and the only one on the agenda is Wednesday, finance planning team again, just to finishing up of going through the warrant articles. Administrative report, Dr. Daly, do you have anything?
Just two quick items. One, we touched on earlier, and I believe it got some coverage in the, in the newspaper, but that was, that Shavani was named the 25025. So it's really quite an honor for her to be included in that mix. It talks about some of the great things she's done with technology, but also with social justice. So she's really making us very proud here in North Reading, and also as her role in the school committee as a representative. The other item is just to, to, to say again that we have done the paperwork to accept an earmarked grant of $45,000 for, to fund technology improvements. This is going to be a great asset to us. We're looking to use that maybe for devices, and certainly also for smart boards in classrooms. So that's something that Representative Jones has helped to secure for us. And I think we should really make sure that we recognize that to him. You, you know, if we have not done so in the past, I was thinking, I think we have, we should probably do a letter. I don't know if it's from the committee or from me, but just thanking for that, that thoughtful acknowledgement, because that's going to be really helpful to our students of North Reading.
I think that's a great idea. I think we would sign on to that. Do you want to draft it?
Excellent. Great. I believe that's all for my administrative report at this time.
Okay. No correspondence, future business. We have the meeting before town meeting on, on Monday, October 4th at 6:45. We have a meeting October 18th at 6:30 PM here, meeting on November 8th at 6:30 PM. There's no other business, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second?
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Unanimous.
Yay.
Wanted to end by eight o'clock. It's eight o'clock, people. Thank you all.